Mayor Pro Tem Bomhover, I think we're good to go. And you are?
It looks like trustee Taylor has dropped off.
Oh, oh, I wonder where he went.
There he is.
He's back. He's back. Okay. All right, Mayor Pro Tem Bomhover, you're good to go.
All righty, well, welcome, everybody, to the December 14th Board Trustees' Work Session. Apologies if you guys can hear the dog eating in the background. The subdivision ordinance, Miranda, would you please call the role?
I will. Trustee Taylor. Trustee App. Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bomhover.
Here.
Trustee Corvallin.
Here.
Trustee Danforth. Trustee Danforth, are you there? I saw you come off mute. You may need to do star six, too, potentially. Okay, so maybe having technical difficulties. Trustee Danforth. Okay, well, please note for the record that trustee, or excuse me, Mayor Larson was not present. And I think trustee Danforth is hopefully working on her tech challenges. But we see her on the list of participants. I'll text her and see if she wants me to call her in.
All righty, Miranda, will you be introducing this? Or I see Jennifer is on.
Yeah. Attorney Madsen was gonna do the annexation piece. I know one trustee has expressed desire that parking, that only one topic be addressed tonight. And I know that wasn't entirely sorted out, whether we would be getting to parking or not. But then when we, if we do tonight, Mayor Pro Tem Bomhover, then I was gonna let kind of trustee Danforth and trustee Corvallin take that over. But we also have Cynthia Baki here to support as needed, assuming, of course, we get to it.
Good evening. This is Jennifer Madsen, Mayor Pro Tem Bomhover. Do you want me to go ahead and go into my presentation on annexation?
Yeah, Miranda, have you heard back from Lindsay?
I haven't. Trustee Danforth, are you there?
Anybody?
We can hear you.
Hi.
Yay. Okay, now I think we're good.
Yeah.
It's, give me one more second here. Are you still?
We can.
You can. Okay, good.
You are good. And I think then, yeah, attorney Madsen, we're ready to go.
Okay, well, I'm gonna share my screen here. I've got a PowerPoint presentation. Okay, can everybody see it okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the topic for this evening is annexations. And this is going to be an overview of Colorado law as it applies to annexations. Since we're in this work session here, feel free to stop me anytime for questions. Okay. So annexation is one of the most important and lasting actions that a municipal governing body can take. It's the process by which municipalities grow and accept new territory, either before or after a development has taken place. It's a form of self-determination. Annexation is a legislative decision. And Colorado state law provides a fairly technical process for accomplishing annexation. So an overview of annexation, as I just mentioned, it is a legislative decision by the Board of Trustees and a highly discretionary decision. The town has no obligation to annex property. The property owners in, of the land requesting to be annexed have no right to be annexed, no legal rights. And Colorado law specifies the process that municipalities follow for annexation and also provides for challenges related to how an annexation can be challenged. And I'll talk about that briefly a little bit later on. There are three types of ways that property can be annexed. The first type is a voluntary petition. And this is gonna be the most common type of annexation that you will see. The annexation municipality has received with this type of petition, it's a petition signed by more than 50% of the landowners in the area who own more than 50% of the land. So essentially, this is a petition by the majority of the people that own the land saying, we want to be annexed in your municipality. The second type of annexation is an annexation election. And this is where a petition is filed, not by the majority of landowners, but by a portion of landowners. The municipality goes through a process, then, to decide if they want to annex the property. And then the question is submitted to the landowners and the registered electors in the area to be annexed, asking those people if they want to be annexed. Really important here is that the question is not submitted to the registered electors of the municipality. So essentially, this is with an annexation election. The petition is submitted first. And then afterwards, the election determines that the majority of the landowners actually do want to be part of the municipality. And then the third type is an enclave annexation. And this is where the area is surrounded entirely by, or is owned solely, by the annexing municipality. So what is included in a petition? An annexation petition, and this is gonna be a petition, a voluntary petition. The annexation petition is typically filled out with a standard form that's supplied by the municipality. And state law provides the specifics that must be completed on this form. The, on the form, the petitioner must provide an allegation that it's desirable and necessary that such area be annexed to the municipality, an allegation that the requirements of sections 3112, 104, and 3112, 105 exist or have been met. And I'll briefly touch on those. An allegation that the signers of the petition comprise more than 50% of the landowners in the area and own more than 50% of the area proposed to be annexed. A request that the annexing municipality approve the annexation of the area proposed to be annexed. And then more information about the specific landowners. There needs to be a signature by those landowners, mailing addresses, legal descriptions of the land. And then also with the petition, they must submit a map containing a legal description of the area proposed to be annexed, boundaries of the annexed property, and ownership tracks of the properties included within that territory. And then a drawing that shows that the annexed property is contiguous, has a contiguous boundary with the municipality. And that's one of the elements for moving forward with an annexation. So once you have a petition, an annexation petition has been submitted, then that starts the process for moving that petition forward. One thing to keep in mind here with this process is there is no set timeline. Annexation can involve some intangibles in processing of a petition, including the ability of the landowners' consultants to submit the required information and documents. And also oftentimes, there's negotiation of terms for an annexation agreement. There is, with a voluntary annexation, typically some type of communication between the landowner and municipality prior to submission of the petition. This is a pre-petition process. This communication often involves discussion of basic terms and conditions that the landowner or municipality desires in order to commence the annexation. Then, once the pre-petition issues are addressed to the satisfactory of the landowner and the municipality, the process commences with the submission of a completed annexation petition.
Jennifer, quick question.
Yes.
Does the county have the ability to override the annexation, to halt it? Or are they merely an input?
The county is not involved in the annexation process.
Yet the county reviews the AIR.
The impact report.
Right. If they, if they look at the impact report and say, oh, no, this is totally impossible. You can't do it. Can, is, do they have the authority to stop the annexation?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, once the municipality receives a petition, there may have been some pre-petition discussions. Then there is a meeting by the Board of Trustees to review the petition and determine whether it's in substantial compliance and set an eligibility hearing date. That meeting with the Board of Trustees is important because if the Board of Trustees finds that the petition is in substantial compliance and sets, then sets the notice, the hearing date, that hearing date must be within 30 to 60 days after that particular Board of Trustee meeting. So it's then a quick process after that substantial determination of substantial compliance. Then you've got, in this process here, you have to have the eligibility hearing notice published in a newspaper for four consecutive weekly publications, this annexation impact report to the county, the trustee Taylor was talking about. And then you have your eligibility hearing. And that's where the Board of Trustees hears information on the annexation and then adopts findings of facts and concludes conclusions. So at the hearing on the annexation petition, any person may appear to present evidence on any matter to be determined. The hearing has to be recorded. And then upon completion of the hearing, the Board of Trustees must adopt findings and conclusions regarding whether the constitutional and statutory requirements have been met. At the hearing, trustee Taylor, a member with the county, and county employee, county commissioner could come and provide testimony to the Board of Trustees. But again, those people don't have direct say as to whether the annexation is approved. So here's the criteria that the Board of Trustees would consider in deciding whether to annex property. And then the first one, this compliance with the Colorado Constitution. It applies to all municipalities and imposes three alternative preconditions to annexation. And at least one must be met. And essentially, what this, the three preconditions are, alternatives, are is that either you have a petition, a voluntary petition, signed by more than 50% of the landowners in an area who own more than 50% of the land, or it's been submitted to a vote and the registered electors and landowners by a majority agree to be annexed. Or the third is that it's an enclave property. The second criteria is the eligibility for annexation under 3112, 104. And this is specifics that one-sixth of the contiguity of the territory to be annexed is against the perimeter of the municipality. In order, one-sixth of the area to be annexed shares a border with the municipality. There's a community interest exists between the territory to be annexed and the municipality. And the territory proposed to be annexed is urban or will be urbanized in the future and is integrated and capable of integrating into the community. And then there are some limitations preventing annexation of the property. Those are set forth in 3112, 105. I'm not really gonna cover these because they're very fact-specific. For example, one of the limitations on annexation is that no land held in identical ownership, meaning the same landowner may be divided into separate parcels without the written consent of the landowner, unless the parcels are separated by a dedicated street, road, or other public way. So that's really what you're looking at when you're deciding an annexation. For the judicial review, a district court may review an annexation proceeding. Challenges can be filed by a registered elector in the area to be annexed, the county, or any municipality within a mile of the area annexed. So registered electors in the town of Netherland cannot challenge an annexation. That body or person who files a challenge must first file a motion for reconsideration with the Board of Trustees. And most of the challenges are procedural. So a challenge by county could be that you didn't follow the particular procedures. You didn't send to us the impact report. Those are the types of challenges. So I'm changing subjects just a little bit here. Moving off of the statutory requirements, a request to annex, annexation petitions is often submitted by a developer who wants to develop the property in the municipality. And so the municipality can work with the developer to create an agreement related to the annexation and the future development. These are annexation agreements. These types of agreements address the effects of an annexation comprehensively. They provide for, typically provide for allocation of costs and obligations for improvements. So the streets, any water sewer connections, those types of things are often described in the annexation agreements. These types of agreements are not required by law and just part of the negotiation process. This, an annexation agreement is a contract where the landowner promises to petition for annexation and the municipality promises to annex the property on certain terms and conditions. Here are some common terms that are often found in annexation agreements. You've got obligations by the developer to dedicate and improve roads, install water and sewer lines, pay fees for water transmission, make storm drainage improvements, participate in bridge costs, donate land to the municipality for public purposes, construct necessary public improvements, address the effects of an annexation comprehensively. Typically, zoning and subdivision is also part of an annexation petition. Like I said, a request to annex is often submitted by a developer who wants to develop property in the municipality. So the annexing municipality may institute zoning and subdivision proceedings after a, an annexation petition is filed. The proposed zoning or subdivision approvals may not become final before the date of the annexation ordinance is adopted. Under Colorado law, it is required that zoning is completed within 90 days after the annexation is approved. And the annexation agreement often goes into zoning. It may state that the governing body may agree to consider a certain zoning density with no guarantees at the end that the zoning process will be followed. So I wanted to just touch briefly on the existing IGA that Netherland has with Boulder County. By statute, as you pointed out, trustee Taylor, the county has no involvement in annexation decisions. There's no referrals to the county and no approvals by the county. In this annexation IGA, Boulder County has a significant and really a final say in annexation of property in the rural preservation area. Under this annexation IGA, Netherland agreed not to annex property in the rural preservation area unless approved by the county and approved at a Netherland election. The Boulder County agreed to generally prohibit density increase for the property in this rural preservation area, prohibit other municipalities from annexing property in the municipal, or excuse me, rural preservation area. And this agreement expires March 7, 2022. So some other things to consider related to annexation is a three-mile plan. And as a precondition to annexation, a municipality must have in place a three-mile plan for the area that's three miles outside of the boundaries and generally describing the location, character, and extent of streets and other transportation ways, public area, public utilities, and transportation. And so kind of a general idea of a municipality's desire to annex within the three miles surrounding the municipal border. A lot of municipalities do this in the comprehensive plan. It does not need to be completed before the annexation petition is submitted, but something like this would need to be completed prior to an annexation ordinance. Often municipalities have in place goals and policies on annexation. You know, what is, what are the town goals related to annexation? Some examples are the area under consideration for annexation should be in the municipality's apparent zone and anticipated growth and expansion and set out in the comprehensive or master plan to require payment of a fair portion of the cost of previously installed municipal utilities that benefit the property. So there's, there's a list. I've got a list of goals and policies that I could potentially share, but that's something to consider putting in place before moving forward with any annexation. So these goals and policies can guide staff and the Board of Trustees on annexation decisions.
Would you, like, list some of those things that you said you would share?
I can, I can list them now, sure.
Just to see, I mean, I see what you're talking about, what?
Yeah. So to annex no land other than public sites, they cannot be served within a specific time period by municipal utilities unless there is a binding agreement by the petitioners for annexation that the municipal utilities will not be made available within that period. To annex territory where it is clearly desirable to square off municipal boundaries for the purpose of greater efficiency or economy in providing municipal services. To annex territory that is determined to be urban in character or where urbanization is clearly imminent and the territory is in need of proper land use controls, like zoning and subdivision controls, building regulations, and good engineering standards. That a preliminary subdivision or development plan accompany any annexation petition for undeveloped land. So the, these goals and policies can really, you know, help shape what the Board of Trustees, what your desire and interest would be related to annexation. You could also adopt an ordinance that adds further requirements to annexations. So I was looking today, and Lyons has adopted a pretty detailed ordinance for the annexation process. A lot of it follows what is laid out in state statute, but there are some additional requirements. So, and specifically related to the petition and what the applicant must submit with the petition. And some examples there, there's more greater specificity as to the map that must be provided with the annexation petition. On that map, let me see here, there were some. Now, the map doesn't really, the map description doesn't talk about it. There were, it seems like, some impact reports in terms of environmental impacts of the annexation. Water rights. Okay. So that is what I have for you in terms of my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Attorney Madsen. I guess, let's just go down the kind of list and see if anyone has any questions for the attorney, Ms. Madsen.
I have a question. So you said that the state law does not have the people in the municipality voting on the annexation. But our current But our current agreement with the county does have the ability of Netherlands residents to vote on the annexation, is that correct?
It does.
So we can have an agreement that does allow people in Netherlands to vote on major annexations if we, if we wish to do that.
You could, you could, another way that you can do it and actually, if that was a desire and that was the last point that I had on my, on my last slide there that I didn't address. But that you can, as the board, implement a process where the town electors get to participate in a decision on annexation and with, you would send it to a vote and have the town residents decide if they want an annexation. I, I would suggest that if that's something that you want to do, I would put that in an ordinance and in your municipal code and not in an agreement.
Okay. Yeah, I think when we, we had this considered some time ago, you know, we spent a year or two and had a public process and we got a lot of feedback. And we had a lot of opposition to annexations in general. And citizens saying they really wanted to be able to vote on this if we were going to have major annexation. So that was strong feedback we received from Netherlands residents last time around. So I just wanted to, wanted to clarify that, you know.
And there was the, oh, I'm sorry. There was a point in time where Netherlands did have that in the, in the town code. I think that the ordinance removing that, I think that might have been done in 2012 when this annexation agreement was entered into. I don't know the circumstances of why it was taken out of code, but other, and other municipalities do that as well.
Right. I think that when you have a major annexation and a major development, every city I've seen says that residential development does not pay its own weight and taxpayers and taxpayers subsidize it to some degree. And I think they have a right to decide if they want to step up and do that, you know, the benefits outweigh the cost.
One, one thing to consider with an election is that elections do cost money. You'd want to decide who pays for that election. And you could have the petitioner pay the cost of that election.
Yeah, I think what we talked about last time around, the Board of Trustees at that time felt that on minor annexations, we would not have elections. On major annexations, we would.
And, and I think that's what Lyons does.
You think what?
Lyons has that, that provision in there where there's some annexations over a certain acreage go to an election.
Right. And that's kind of what we concluded, the BOT concluded that at that time. And the last go around with this, which was over a couple of years with a lot of public hearings. Okay, thank you.
Well, what about the people who aren't in town in Netherlands that will be so affected in the three mile rule that we were one of your considerations? How can we allow them to vote?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't have an opportunity to vote.
Then three miles of new development. It seems like they're going to be impacted.
Annext, correct?
What's that?
Jennifer, in, in the event that somebody was outside of town, they would have to petition the town to be annexed. Otherwise, there's no potential that the town could annex somebody that wouldn't get the opportunity to vote against being annexed.
What about the neighbors of the petitioning to be annexed who are going to be immediately affected but are not in town limits because they're not in town? Because they're being petitioned to be in town? How can they have a fair say in what occurs next to them?
If, if I'm recalling the write-up, Jennifer, that you provided last meeting, the people bordering the area petitioning for annexation have the opportunity to either request to be part of that annexation or not, correct?
Yeah, right. But what if, but voting for a vote, but they won't have a vote? Because they're not part of town. I understand, doesn't that seem really unfair? That they're the most immediately affected, yet they can't even vote?
Merely because a land near them is now part of Netherlands? I'm not seeing the, I'm not seeing common problems there.
You don't see a problem with a huge development that occurs right as their neighborhood? I mean, like it's, we're not just talking about a house asking to be annexed. We're talking about a giant piece of property that wants to add a hundred billion. A development, a village. Well, this is why we're here. Okay, let's not be coy. So the bottom line is.
We're not being coy. If we're just talking about one development, this meeting is wasted. This has to be about annexation generally.
Yeah, I see all the criteria, but.
Tanya, Tanya, I would, I would agree with.
How can we include other people?
At, at this point, their opportunity then is to talk with their neighbors who are then petitioning to be annexed into town. So if one neighbor wants to, another doesn't, as Jennifer just went over, we have rules set out by the state regarding annexation. The properties have to be in line, those individuals have to request to be a part of town. Then the townsfolk would vote on it. The opportunity of a neighbor who is maybe a neighbor of folks who want to annex into town, they don't want to, is to talk with their neighbors as we did the last go around.
Saying, how can other residents that aren't living in town who are not, who see the ramifications of a development that would come from being annexed? How can they have a voice?
They, so they would not be able to participate in any type of election. They could not participate in, in an election. But these people could participate at any of the public hearings, at the annexation hearing, and also at any development hearings. So any zoning hearings, any, any land development hearings that would be before the Planning Commission or before the Board of Trustees. Just as if, if the development were to go up in the county, they, that's what their right would be in the county is to be able to participate in those hearings. They wouldn't be able to vote on it, but they would be able to participate in the hearings.
That's what I figured. So this whole conversation about annexation has to do with the IGA because we want the IGA to expire so that we can allow annexate. That's why we're, yeah, that's why we're here, right or wrong?
Because.
Wrong.
Wrong. Why are we here right now?
We're here to. The IGA is expiring and there is some feeling amongst the board as there was a year and a half, two years ago, as Alan alluded to, where the board had put in almost a year, two years of time looking at the IGA, looking at the developments over the last decade and having an understanding that potentially working with the county, it's time for Netherlands to take back on its own land use kind of control. Currently, as it stands, correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but as you alluded to, Boulder County has the final say in our IGA process or in our annexation process.
Right, yeah.
Yes. So that's not typical of municipalities across the state, is it?
No, not at all. No.
So this is something that the last board and this board recognizes, as does the county, is not necessarily ideal. The Boulder County has a lot of open space it deals with, it has a lot of its own development it deals with. It has a lot of its own urban wildland interface issues it's confronting. So to have to also be in charge of the three miles around of the town of Netherlands is kind of an undue burden on the county commissioners. It's also something that when things comes before them is not necessarily their purview. So it's not necessarily something that they have the greatest grasp on how it's affecting the community in the mountains or how it's going to impact that community because they have a more 30,000 foot view on the entire county. So as leaders, it was the thought that since this IGA is expiring, it may be worthwhile to update it to reflect more current events and how things are kind of transpiring. I think the county would also be more inclined to see Netherlands kind of step up and take more charge of its area around it. So I don't think this has to do with annexation or one development. This has to do with the fact that this is a planning document, that's a 10-year document that is now expiring. And we're looking with a 10-year event horizon how the town of Netherlands is going to control and govern the land use in its periphery. So let's not get caught up talking about one development or another development. Let's have an event horizon of in the next decade, what is likely to occur in the town of Netherlands? And what do we want the town government to have control over versus having the county have control over?
I'd like to.
Okay, well, interesting idea. I just feel like Netherlands currently has issues with water and sewage and evacuation and just in itself that to even consider annexing any other properties seems ridiculous. I mean, the, the last meeting we had with the water lawyer guy was talking to like really dire circumstances for our water table and our water sources. And how are we gonna give more water to other people? Like, I just, premature to be talking about annexing right now. We can't even handle the issues at hand for the population and serve our people currently without raising rates.
I do have a question for Attorney Madison.
I'd just like to, I'd like to say something. I don't disagree with Jonathan. I think what he's laying out is, is true. We're looking at a 10-year horizon here. And at the same time, I think the last board that discussed this, there was not a consensus that we should let this expire. I don't think it was resolved. And I for one think we should extend it until we have more discussion and resolve it, but that's, you know, updating board. The entire board to decide whether or not, how we want to proceed.
I'd also like to note that the current IGA really does kind of focus on annexation. But if we were to extend an IGA, renew the IGA, come up with a better IGA, annexation doesn't have to be the only thing we discuss. We could also discuss how the county manages industrial sources of pollution around the area. There are a number of issues I think we could include in a new IGA that don't just focus on annexation, right? Now, that's kind of what it is. But it doesn't mean that the idea of an IGA is bad. But it also doesn't necessarily mean that a new IGA has to go as far with restrictions on annexation as the current one. So I think we have lots of options. And I don't think the IGA is per se bad. I think we are highly restricted. Part of that's our fault, part of that's the county. But yeah, we're looking at a new IGA now and how we address that is still up to the board to decide.
I think that's very true. And I think that, you know, this IGA was agreed upon by the town and the county. And it accomplished the goal of not preventing sprawl and explosive growth and maintaining that rural preservation area. So it was a mutually agreed upon agreement that was about shared values and keeping rural rural and urban urban. So, but absolutely agree, Julie, and I think there are other things the IGA could do.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with that more. I did have a question for Attorney Madison. It's funny because I actually agree with what everyone has said, even though some of those things seem to be contradictory. I mean, I think Jonathan is fundamentally correct. We have ceded some, uh, what is a right to local democratic control over our community to the county, right? Which is, it is a right that our locality has by state statute, but we have ceded that to the county. And that fundamentally does seem to be a strange decision to make. Because I do think that local democratic control is really important. But to, to that end, Attorney Madison, are there examples of intergovernmental agreements that are less about, let's say, a county approving whether or not we annex, but rather providing resources and information to municipalities who maybe, let's say, lack those resources or those staff or that expertise in order to provide input on the process so that we can make the best possible decision for the town? Did you, did you find anything like that in Colorado?
I, I haven't, but that doesn't mean it, it doesn't exist. It's definitely possible that there's something like that out there. And if it doesn't exist, it's something that, you know, we could create.
Yeah, because it does seem to me that with Boulder County's sort of armies of staff and, and millions of dollars, that there are resources there that we could use in our decision-making process that we probably should have access to as a municipality within that county. And I don't want to see us antagonize the county in, in so extreme a way that we are not able to, to leverage those resources for our own benefit as a town. So that, I would, I would, I would be really interested in pursuing an IGA as, as Trustee Taylor said, that maybe it's less about annexation, more about how the, the county provides resources to the town when considering these types of issues, especially annexations that are 10 or more acres. That to me is really interesting, but I would, I, I am also very interested in ensuring that the county does not have veto power over what is fundamentally a town's local democratic right.
So I'd just like to make a note that in, when engaged in principled negotiation, one of the key factors that the negotiator keeps in the back of their mind is what they call the BATNA, the best alternative to a negotiated agreement. And I think that what we need to understand here while going into a principled and sincere negotiation with the county is that our BATNA, having no IGA, may on balance be marginally better than having a bad IGA. And I don't think we, I don't think we suffer hugely not having an IGA, but I, I do believe there's some value in having one. And so right now, we give an awful lot of power to the county that really the state doesn't require us to give them. And so I think that we enter, I, I think, I think that if we keep our heads straight on this, we enter into a sincere negotiation in order to produce a good IGA, fully understanding that our best alternative to a negotiated agreement is not horrible. Anyway, as long as we keep that in mind, we won't do anything panicky and stupid. So I, I think we just need to focus on keeping that in mind and reminding the, the county that we're equal partners here, actually.
Well, this is Tanya. What is the disadvantage to extending it until while we use that year or the whatever BOT is in place, uses that year to create the IGA they want? What is the rush to just abandon it? Why, what is the motivation to just let it go? I don't feel like it's going to hold us back.
I'm not sure anybody's saying that.
Well, I did. I heard many people saying we should just let it go, let it lapse and take.
Two people.
Town. I'm like, why can't we just use this year? Re-up it for a year and come up with an actual what we need, like you're saying, where, you know.
I think that, Tanya, is fundamentally what, what we have to decide on as, as a board.
I understand that. That's what I'm saying. Why, what is the rush?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, let's, let's get an answer from one of the people who suggested we allow the IGA to expire.
So yeah, I'll, I'll jump in here. I'm the one who has largely stood on the side of let's go at negotiating this, but let's not be in a rush to re-up it. I believe that we can and do have a good partnership with the county, but I believe the rush to re-up it is the lapse to continue to say, hey, county, you have final say in our land use. And I believe that the act of saying, no, we're trying to renegotiate this. And I like the idea of making this IGA about far more than annexation. There are many, many more issues that Netherlands is facing. There are many, many more issues that uh Netherlands is facing that kind of overlap with the county. And I liked what Eric had to say about the resources the county has. Netherlands as a artery town kind of in the mountains that literally is a town because we have the one bridge across Middle Boulder Creek. Faces a lot of issues that are not really homegrown, so to speak. All of the traffic that comes up to utilize Boulder County open space. We have the traffic that comes up to utilize the U S Forest Service. We have a lot of partnerships with Boulder County in these areas as well as with the U S Forest Service regarding these things. But there's not a lot of comprehensive planning moving forward of how all of these agencies are gonna continue to grow. And we can definitely look over the past year that we've been found, we've been put on the map. So ten years ago, when these amendments were made to the I G A to give Boulder County control of annexation was largely what this amendment was, was in the aftermath of the Indian Peaks subdivision annexation. Where a lot of things went south and the town largely acted as a developer, but didn't make much money. A lot of people were unhappy in town and the sentiment was people elected to the town of Netherlands board are incompetent and should not be allowed to make these decisions. While that might still be the sentiment of some people around the town of Netherlands, I believe times have changed. And I think that the town of Netherlands needs to grow up. And then we need to recognize that we are now on the map. Eldora has now kind of stepped forward as a community resort, looking to grow, looking to work with Netherlands to grow in a sustainable way that aligns with Netherlands comprehensive plan. Boulder County has built affordable housing right in our backyard. We are house many festivals that are nationally known. We are no longer the little town of Netherlands that can hide from the fact that every powder day and every nice summer day, we're overrun by traffic. And I believe that we need an I G A with the county that reflects that we are now a larger town. And I think that two thousand thirteen floods really showed the entire state how much of an artery to the entire peak-to-peak community we are. We house niche, we house the Netherlands Food Pantry. All of these are organizations that largely actually cater to a broader community that reaches almost from, you could say, Ward all the way over to Blackhawk. So as a municipality, while we might only encompass our small little area, we have influence over a much broader area and are the voice for the mountain community. And currently we have an I G A that gives Boulder County at large pretty much the end-all be-all when we're the ones that sit and listen to public comment from members from Ridge Road and Magnolia. So I would agree with Alan that the large sentiment during the last discussion was that everything should go to a public vote. And I'm all for that. But what I would like to see is that vote be of the town of Netherlands residents and not the county commissioners. And what I think the basically what you lose when you sign back onto this is you essentially say, yeah, we still don't have our stuff together enough as a town to feel that we are responsible enough to take charge of our own future and our own land use management. And we signal to the county that we basically are still a child in the game of government and land use and that we need their blessing to do anything. As a town, I don't think we can afford that anymore. I think if we're gonna address our traffic issues, we're gonna address our sustainability goals, and we're gonna address our housing issues. We need to have all of the power to come together as a town to come up with the best solutions. And right now, we
I need to interrupt you because you're saying so many things. Traffic problems.
There are many, many different ways. Basically, it's called systems thinking. So okay, can you, how can having can different control of the I G A? It's an intergovernmental agreement of planning. So we want to start routing traffic in a different way. So we work on negotiating during this with Boulder County. How much traffic can we route down Magnolia? How much traffic can we route down Ridge Road? County, are you willing to improve Ridge Road to help route traffic this way? Growth and planning has everything to do with a town. If the town's taking on more traffic, well, then the county roads around it maybe can be improved to then accompany some of that traffic.
With the I G A, Boulder County is gonna improve Ridge Road?
There's opportunities when we're talking about planned, planned three miles out kind of development. I think that that's a potential that the county might want to keep certain parts of the I G A as it currently stands. And that's a bargaining chip that we have is okay, improve Ridge Road for us.
I'm sorry, Jonathan, I just don't get it. How is the I G A, if we leave? How encourage what county to in, improve Ridge Road?
I don't think it will. It's a, that's a long shot. What you're asking is what's
Let's talk about reality then, because
To conclusions that are not discussed right yet.
He said that. I'm sorry. I'm trying to
No, you're completely misunderstanding. He's not saying get rid of the I G A and we get Ridge Road.
I mean, like, I wanna know
He's saying the I G A should include, should include parameters around how we get the county to help us route around us. That means do we bargain one way or another? It doesn't mean we throw out the I G A and I don't think that's what any of us are talking about right now. We're all wanting to drop the I G A and that's simply not true. You're basing this on a false premise.
Keep talking. Sorry. I thought that was the motivation here that we want.
No, we want to keep the I G A.
That's what Jonathan said in the last meeting and that's where I'm at right now. So
I want to negotiate the I G A, but I'm not worried about it lapsing. Because fundamentally, I don't think that this board has a different mindset than what the I G A currently sets out. I think fundamentally, I don't think that we have a bad partnership with the county and that we're gonna jump on any annexation if this I G A lapses. I believe if we're negotiating the I G A, then we're gonna be having public process for that I G A, which means we're gonna be having multiple public meetings like we did the last go around with this. We're gonna be taking public comment from people on Ridge Road, from people on Magnolia, from people in that three mile area. And if the I G A lapses in this process, it's not really a big deal. Because we're openly discussing it, because we're openly discussing it, we're not gonna take action on anything that's being discussed until action and resolution has occurred and a vote has actually happened. My point is that if you sign and re-up the I G A for the nine months, what you're basically doing is you're saying, okay, this I G A is good enough that if we can't negotiate something better, we'll go along with this. I don't think it's good enough right now for our future. And what I would rather do is negotiate it, try to have something good. And if it lapses, just say, look, we're intending on signing a new I G A, but we're not gonna sign something until it's right, until we have taken our power back as a town. That's where I stand, is I'm not willing to see this town sign on again, even a small extension to something that has largely given away our power as a municipal body.
What is that? What other powers? I'm just wanting to understand. That's why we're here. What other powers have we lost with the I G A?
Yes, because currently in the I G A, if you read it about annexation, it does require a vote of the town of Netherlands citizens. But the, the county commissioners can overturn that. So even if the town of Netherlands citizens voted for any said annexation and the county didn't like that, the county could still overturn that. And your board has no rights over the ability to annex and the ability to annex in your future planning zone. I mean, this I G A has way more to do than about annexation. And it can also have to do about where, understanding where the county has potential planning growth areas. We're not the only body here, it's municipality, that governs their growth. The county has growth in its unincorporated areas and it has infill. The county might have parts of their own infill and their own growth that they want to readdress because they're on our borders.
Okay, so basically the big, the biggest thing that the I G A is holding us back on is annexation. Okay, so that's, to me, that's not an urgent thing. But that's just for me. I feel like we could use the nine months to come up with what we want from Boulder, which would be what maintaining Ridge Road, maintaining Magnolia better, what other things? We have to make a list.
There's, there just, let me jump in here a couple of things. One is that I just want to remind all of you that we're talking, you're talking about negotiation strategy with Boulder County and that is a subject that could be held, a discussion that could be held in executive session.
Gotcha.
And um, the other way, the other thing I wanted to remind you is that there's other ways to stop an annexation. Or other ways to hold off on annexation petitions besides um re-upping or extending the current I G A. And that would be putting a moratorium in place um where the town said it was not going to accept any annexation petitions for a, a period of time, say nine months, a year.
Yeah, I was going to say something similar um in that I think it would be either way, either way that this, that this board goes and, and, and not thinking about negotiations right now, but only kind of thinking about just generally this, this entire process that's coming bearing down upon us. Uh, is that there, I, as Attorney Madison said, there are ways I think that the town can control this on, on our own, that we don't actually need an intergovernmental agreement to control the way that we go about annexing property. And I, and I, I don't think um that uh it would be a great idea in general to not have a coherent policy on annexation as a town and then allow the I G A to lapse, which would then put uh landlords in a position where it would be confusing, where they could potentially submit a petition legally speaking to the town and that petition could be taken up by the Board of Trustees without coming to any kind of uh conclusion on whether or not we want to renegotiate the I G A or whether or not we want to adopt ordinances uh for the town related to annexation. So I really just don't want to get us into a position where um legally speaking, whether or not it would be the intention of this board uh to uh, to start annexing properties as soon as the I G A lapsed, which I don't think that is the intention of this board. But I don't want to uh, from a process standpoint, open up that window of opportunity for petitions to be filed, even if you know, we, we say that we're not going to hear them. So I think that it should be very clear and it should be kind of legally uh copacetic that we should uh uh be um very solid on how we're going to proceed moving forward and have something in place. So what Attorney Madison suggested in the form of a moratorium or maybe something else um for a designated period of time or maybe not. That uh probably should be the way that we go, whether or not we re-up or lapse, we need to have something in place.
And I, I would like to uh concur with uh Trustee Coombs as well and also note, th- this is just kind of an impression I have that may or may not have bearing on this. I certainly agree that we should have a policy regarding annexation. And I certainly agree that for an annexation of a, a large area, the whole town should be involved in that. Uh, I will note that my impression in the meeting with the county commissioners was that it was an amicable meeting. And yet, there was an undercurrent of you guys just aren't quite ready to make these kinds of decisions. It, it seems that perhaps the prior board gave the county this impression. And so the county may be making decisions based upon that assumption that this is a very immature town, not really ready to make decisions. And so if we could, in a benign fashion, convey the message that we believe we are ready to manage this, that may be constructive, both uh instructing ourselves regarding our abilities and instructing the county regarding uh our intentions and what we hope to do. So I, I think that while my initial uh tension in our prior meeting was that we should extend the I G A, I do see merit in uh Mayor Protem Baumhover's argument that there may be value in allowing it to lapse and then saying, you know, look, we're, we're, we're grownups. We've put on our big boy pants and we've got a policy now. And here's the policy and you should find this policy entirely reasonable. And we're gonna be continuing to negotiate this I G A about not just annexation, but these other topics. Let's get this I G A going. Pardon?
Oh, Julian, what are the other topics then?
For example, uh, uh pollution of groundwater uh from a joint adjacent industrial areas around the town, but not within town limits.
Right, so
The other would be traffic, just exactly as Mayor Protem Baumhover suggested, saying uh, we're going to uh support you in all of these ways that you like. We would also like you to help to route cars uh more effectively around our town. Lots of possibilities. Uh, we don't have all the uh subjects lined out right now. Uh, uh, Trustee Corvallin, you may propose additional possibilities for this I G A. I've got three in mind and that's, uh, that's where I am right now.
Okay. I, I'm still not in favor of just letting it lapse, but I do like the idea of having demands, but I know we're not supposed to talk about that right now.
The other thing that I just don't want to fail to mention, uh especially for the folks who are joining us uh right now in this meeting is that whatever, um, whatever happens here and whichever way the, the, the board ends up voting in terms of whether or not we re-up this I G A, that if we do end up putting policies in place or additional policies in place regarding annexation for the town of Netherlands, that those policies um I hope will and I believe should uh conform to Netherlands' planning process, our comprehensive plan and the democratic processes that we've already gone through and that we continue to go through in developing the new comprehensive plan. And that, that will be kind of the guiding light for how we develop Netherlands' annexation policies. As well as the public process for those policies themselves. So I just want that to be very clear that uh, that this is not independent from uh public process.
Indeed, one could imagine that Netherlands adopts an annexation policy that is robust enough that the county doesn't actually feel it needs to be a major part of the next I G A. It's quite possible that that could be the case.
Uh, Julian, I'm curious, um, what ideas do you have for uh, you know, po- pollution of groundwater from above us that town could instill if we didn't have the I G A back, holding us back? Like, wha- what are some actions we could do to protect us?
No, the I G A doesn't hold us back on that. Indeed, this is where we want a really good I G A. And I think that I G A could include requirements upon the county that would give us additional control over those areas.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, we had a situation where we had uh discussions with the county. And there were previous Board of Trustees, I'm sure, that didn't know that a major industrial development was being approved near Netherlands that could affect Netherlands. And we weren't involved in the process. And that's where I think, you know, we definitely need some improvement in terms of industrial siting, potential water pollution, et cetera. When we have a major industrial site, you know, four or five miles, we weren't involved in the decision.
But this I G A says nothing about that. So this I G A expiring doesn't hurt or help.
Right, it doesn't hurt or help, but a new one, if we made a new one, would say we need to be informed of any actions like that.
We, we would like there to be significant controls, giving us, for example, a right to know before We, we would like there to be significant controls, giving us, for example, a right to know before approvals are given. Given us perhaps a right to participate in lawsuits against such industrial developments when they, those industrial developments violate those rules of the county.
Right.
Numerous issues like that are up for grabs and no one has talked about that in relation to this IGA yet. But we're entering into negotiations.
Right, Julian, I fully support that, fully.
But a lot, so.
No, you want to let it lapse, but you want a new one. So I'm just confused because part of me thinks when people want to let it lapse, they don't want to create a new IGA. When you're frozen, am I frozen?
I think everyone on the board is in agreement, we want an IGA ultimately. It's currently, the IGA as it exists is mostly about annexation and the amendment that was made in 2012. The rest of the IGA going back to 2002, because I believe it's a 20-year agreement, am I correct there, Jennifer?
Twenty years.
Yes, 20-year agreement. There was amendment in 2012, which is the annexation amendment. That there are a lot of good things in the IGA. And there are a lot of things that are reflective of what the town of Netherlands was 20 years ago. We want an IGA on a planning level with Boulder County. We just want a new IGA, whereas if we signed this old IGA, we then have to, even though it's only extended for nine months, have to negotiate based upon the parameters of that old IGA, which is, we're gonna do anyway. But if we start there and that old IGA lapses all of a sudden in the negotiation, as Julian is saying, the fallback alternative for us is well, there is no longer an IGA with the county. As Eric has really, really well stated, I believe that if we're gonna go that route, we need to enact an ordinance that outlines our stance on annexation. But at that point, the IGA is open to all types of possibilities. Whereas if we extend this IGA and negotiate only based upon this IGA, that's kind of our baseline. We can try to add more things into it, but we have a better opportunity to get more from the county if their worst outcome is they no longer have an IGA with town of Netherlands. It's simple negotiation. So I think.
I mean, I'm personally, you go.
No, I was just gonna say, the current IGA, were it not as tepid as it is, that is to say, were it providing us with current real value, yes, I would certainly be 100% for extending it. But right now, it's really very much kind of confirming how we already feel anyway. And extending it almost has no value. But if we were to also step forward and say, here's our policy for annexation, which is about all this IGA is about, the next one should be about more. Then we've got.
What's our policy?
I'm not inventing policy right now, we'll develop.
I think that's another work session, Tanya. I think that's another work session. I think the goal tonight is to.
I think, okay, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the goal tonight is to get a sense of this board. Which way are we leaning? We all want to negotiate this IGA, it sounds like. But are we leaning toward? We obviously can't take a vote, but I think it would be helpful for the board to know, are we leaning toward re-upping this IGA when it expires? I believe, what is it, March? Or are we leaning toward, let's go into the negotiation process in no rush, knowing that if it lapses, it lapses. And in the meantime during this negotiation, if that's the case, focusing on coming up with a policy for the annexation ordinance. I guess, one thing is, Lindsay, we haven't heard at all from you. I was wondering if you had any input.
So I remember going through this when I was on the planning commission and all of our IGA discussions, so sorry if I haven't spoken up too much. But I spent a year already discussing it. And I think, you know, I'm in favor of renegotiation and that was the path that we had gone down this last time. And I liked the direction we were going previously, but I think it certainly met with a a lot of resistance from people in town who I think misunderstood the intentions of some of the things we included. But I, I certainly think that renegotiating so we can take back some of our power as a town and, you know, prove that we're kind of grown up, I think is, is really the right way to go.
And, and I don't think at any point anybody has discussed not renegotiating. That's, that's not an issue we're discussing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess my only concern about letting it expire and thinking we can put our own one and annexation policy together relatively quickly, I think that's, we're gonna find that it's a long drawn out process, it's gonna be difficult. And I, I like your idea of, you know, my motivation is re-up it, use county resources and have some help. But, you know, realizing that this is not really acceptable going forward. And, but it's a placeholder until we have time to get our own better annexation policies in place and then expand the IGA into other areas like, as, as suggested by, by Julian, you know, so I think that I don't see advantages letting it expire, I guess, although I respect the, the people's opinions who feel that is the case.
Attorney Madison's proposal of putting a moratorium on annexations while we're renegotiating and if it expires is consistent with what we did regarding marijuana legislation, where we said, we're putting a stop on this while we develop legislation. And that could be an equivalent approach, where we say, we're, we're not even making decisions about annexation until we have a policy and we're working actively on a policy. So that could still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what it's, yeah.
I would like to just confirm something with Attorney Mattson here. I guess a pretty simple question, like legally and functionally, I guess, like functionally speaking. Do you see, because I'm not seeing a difference really between extending the IGA for a certain number of months versus letting it lapse and putting a moratorium on annexation for the same number of months, let's say. I'm, I'm not functionally seeing a difference there. And I don't, I don't, I guess, if, correct me if I'm wrong, is there a legal sort of difference there that I'm not thinking of that would change how it works function, functionally?
I, I think that the practical effect of extension of the IGA and a moratorium is the same.
And I think that, I, I believe as Mayor Protem Baumhofer has proposed, there may be a psychological advantage for both us as negotiators for the town and the county, as negotiators for the county in allowing it to lapse. And I, I'm, I'm beginning to feel that there may actually be proper, meaningful advantage to the way we think about how we are approaching this IGA. It allows us as negotiators to think, ah, we're not even thinking about this current IGA, we're thinking about the next one. So I, I think. So I, I agree that, I, I, thank you, Attorney Madison. I was suspecting that as was Trustee Coombs Esmail, there's no functional difference. But there may be there may be a difference in the way we think about how we approach the next IGA. And always looking forward to a better negotiated new IGA.
And on the flip side of that, it is also possible, I think, that negotiations go better and more smoothly, potentially. If we as, as Trustee Taylor said, sort of demonstrate our seriousness and that we do feel that as a community, we are, we are, we, we are ready to make these kinds of decisions. But in terms of maybe getting resources, especially from the county when negotiating this IGA, that we come at this sort of with the olive branch approach, rather than with the threat of expiry approach kind of right off the bat. So I'm not convinced either way, like what is the best tactic? And I think we need an executive session to really hash through these very specific negotiating tactics that we might use with the county, as Attorney Mattson suggested. But, but I do think there's merit on both sides of that argument and I think we're seriously.
Are we gonna lose resources by letting it expire? Are there any, any assistance that Boulder County gives us within the IGA that by letting it expire, we lose?
I don't believe so, Attorney Madison. They, they're not providing any resources. They're saying you can't do these things.
Well, the only resource is their review.
Yeah.
And I would suspect that the county would always agree to this annexation agreement.
What annexation agreement?
The IGA that's currently in place.
Oh, right.
So if you let it lapse and you come back to them and you say, oh, we would like the same agreement that we had before, I'm sure they would say yes.
Sure. I am just, you know, I'm a little confused. Part of me feels like this is annexation driven, this whole move to change the IGA. I like the idea controlling industry around us and having more of a say. That sounds really appealing to me, but I feel like the whole first half hour was all about annexation. I feel like this is being motivated because of annexation desires and I feel like we're keep talking about our annexation plan when we know full well that Envision wants infill, doesn't want annexation, the majority. So I, I am just a little confused. I am okay with the moratorium and annexation if we let this lapse. I think that's the only way it would be acceptable until we come up with a vote and a plan and because I don't, I'm, I'm just a little confused about this obsession about wanting to annex so much. And I know we're not supposed to talk specifics, but I just feel like this whole thing is being annex driven and I don't feel like that's the way to make policy.
Well, that's what the IGA is right now. It's just about annexation.
Yeah, but it feels like we're so against being told we can't annex. And I feel like we haven't even solved our own problems within the town we have. So why, you know, like I just, you know, you guys keep saying we're grown up and everything and I would beg to differ. But, you know.
Tanya, I know. Yeah, I see exactly where you're coming from here and I, and I fundamentally agree with, with what you're saying in that specific examples and specific instances and specific properties and parcels that might want or not want to be annexed should not drive overall policy on annexation.
It feels like that's what's happening.
I know.
It feels like it. Maybe I'm wrong.
I don't think so.
Okay, that's good to know.
I mean, yeah, I mean.
I'm okay if we let this lapse and put a moratorium on annexation and we can talk about this and get the public involved again. And I can tell you all the reasons why we're not grown up and you can tell me how we can be grown up and, and that's fine. That's just kind of where I stand right now.
Yeah, yeah, this, it's a different discussion, Tanya, having you explain to us.
You said, Julian.
Not, how we're not grown up and how we should now make, what changes we should make in order to grow up. Different discussion, different discussion. This one is basically over, what are we gonna do about this current IGA, which is basically just.
Yeah, I told you my stance, as long as we do a moratorium.
Yeah, you don't have control over your borders, essentially what this IGA says. And there are several spots where expanding the borders would be useful to the town, not just the one thing you're thinking about.
No, I know there's other.
Having that, having that limitation is possibly problematic as we go through discussing it, but there are no full plans on the table for any areas that are possible for annexation right now. And therefore, we can't discuss anything about any annexation because there is no plan associated with any area to be annexed. Before we annex anything, we would have to determine if that's useful to the town, what is the plan, how is it laid out? That's not even on the table right now. So none of us are discussing that because we can't. We got no idea what's going on.
Okay.
This IGA is just about annexation and what this discussion is about is how do we best negotiate the next IGA? And should that IGA only be about annexation? And I think we're mostly in agreement, no. There are a number of things we should include in the next IGA. Let's get those down on paper, get them clear, put them into a negotiating plan and then make those negotiation processes work.
And also, Tanya, what I think is, now, I, I just wanted you to know that I like, I'm, I, I completely understand where you're coming from here and I act, and I absolutely agree fundamentally on this. So you're not alone on this, on this, on this board in, 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 in thinking this. And I think a lot of us think the same way. We're just phrasing it, I think, slightly differently. And one of the things that I think we can potentially do if we're gonna negotiate with the county on an IGA, one of the things they're gonna ask us for, right, is some sort of limit on annexation. That is one of the things that we might have to give them in order to get resources back, right? So this may even be the best way that we can actually secure some limitations on the expansion of Netherlands' borders through an intergovernmental agreement is to negotiate and ask for something in return. Right? So without, without us giving up some right to annex any piece of property surrounding Netherlands, we're unlikely to get any concessions on their part for traffic flow or for, you know, maybe designating the mine as a, as an area of state interest and, you know, making them regulate that a bit better. So I think that there's a lot of opportunity here for sort of both sides of this argument, if you want to phrase it that way.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I mean.
I, I can say I definitely share your concerns, Tanya.
Thanks, Alan. No, I, I know there's, there's places where we want to annex that aren't related to developments and whatnot. But, yeah, I think, one thing at a time, I think we need to not, I'm afraid if we let it lapse, we're gonna get inundated with annexation requests. And I don't think we have the time or bandwidth for that right now. So I think we have to do the moratorium so that we can come up with the IGA we want and then submit it. So it's basically the same thing. It could take a year, you know, before we lift that, in my opinion, because it's gonna take that long to come up with all the plans. I'm, I'll go with either way on that one. If you guys want to let it lapse or let it continue, as long as there's a moratorium, I'll be good with either.
That makes sense.
Well, it seems like the board is still kind of split on this. Do you folks maybe just wanna kind of sound off, we'll go down the list and say, Alan, it sounds like you are in favor of signing kind of the extension for the nine-month extension and negotiating, is that correct?
Yeah, I just think it's the simplest way to proceed and doesn't, I don't think it ties our hands and we just let the county know, we're gonna look more, much more broadly at this. This is just a placeholder, it's worked, it's okay. But it's, you know, we do feel like it ties our hands and we're gonna be negotiating more broadly.
Okay. And Tanya, it sounds like you're falling on that line as well of, let's just sign the extension and negotiate working off of that.
I would unless we let it lapse simultaneously with putting a moratorium on annexation. Simultaneous.
Jul- Julian, it sounds like you're largely with me of, my main thing, I agree fundamentally, there's no difference, but I think one signals something to the broader community and county. If we kind of put a moratorium in place effective, you know, March 2022 and this lapses, it signals to investors, developers, the county, just about everybody, oh, well, something's changing for the town of Netherlands. Oh, they're renegotiating their land use intergovernmental agreement with the county. And that just kind of signals to everybody that we're doing this because moratoriums get attention. Whereas if we just sign the extension, it's just kind of another one of these discussions and might. fall by the wayside. So I'm obviously there. Julian, am I correct assuming you're with, let's let it lapse?
I, I'm on the fence to some degree, but I see the merit in your proposal, Mayor Protem. I, I, I think that, I, I, I think we're running some serious risks if we start to panic over some fear of a massive cascade of annexation requests. Because I don't think that's the case. I think there are an awful lot of rumors going around that have nothing to do with anything that's actually on paper and planned. And everybody here has to understand that somebody's not gonna come up and say, oh, annex my place. And the BOT is gonna say, oh, sure, well, annex your place. No, that, there is a process involved that could take a year or more anyway. So if somebody asks for an annexation right now, we're still waiting for them to present an entire plan and then approve that plan, have to go through the planning commission. There's a whole bunch of stuff that's involved here and I don't think we should start panicking about, oh no, lots and lots of annexations. But I'm entirely okay with the idea of saying, let's not allow any annexations until we've got a policy and establish a policy. And then use that policy as part of our negotiations on the IGA. So Mayor Protem, I'm, I'm not 100% decided on this, but I, I do think I, but I fully understand the merits of, of your suggestion.
I do have one, one concern, I guess if somebody happens to submit an annexation, I guess, while we are renegotiating, wouldn't that sort of pause on our ability to renegotiate or, or talk about the annexations? Because if we had something before us, we wouldn't be allowed to change it, right? So.
The, the annexation would assure that that didn't happen, I think.
You mean the moratorium?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, thank you, the moratorium, I think would prevent that. That would, that would say, we're not considering anything like this.
Yeah.
For a while. I, I, I think that would be sufficient, unless Attorney Madsen disagrees.
No, a moratorium would stop any annexation petitions, the town could not accept annexation petitions.
Yeah, I, I just don't think we have the time to deal with it while we're trying to renegotiate this IGA. Those things will take a ton of time.
I, I just don't think that we're gonna get a barrage of annexations anyways. But I think it's more of just, for me, making sure that, you know, legally, we don't get caught, you know, between a rock and a hard place while we're trying to figure out and negotiate things. But if we, if, if the remote chances that somebody submitted something, then, yeah, then we're stuck, so.
Remote chance? I'm pretty sure we're gonna get one.
I, I don't know, I mean, there's always rumors, but I've never seen anything come before us, so it's.
Correct, only rumors right now.
I mean, I can, over the years, we've had so many rumors and random things come before the board and nothing has ever come of them, so.
Yeah.
So I, I can't, I don't get really worked up over this stuff because we also have a lot of checks and balances in place of.
I understand, we do, but I know that some developments are waiting for annexation.
But we don't know, I mean.
Really? There's, I'm not sure, I'm not aware of an application.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I've been getting emails that you guys haven't.
No, but this issue is moot if, if we are talking about a moratorium.
Exactly. Yeah, I guess, I don't know why I'm getting emails, that's so weird. Okay.
Yeah, okay, I don't know what you're saying, yeah.
But I think if, if we do a moratorium, I want like a hard deadline, you know, for us to make sure that we stick with it and we figure it out and it's done. You know, I don't, I don't want this to dry on for too long.
Sure, like we did with the marijuana legislation.
Exactly.
Pick a good date and then work very hard to meet that date, yeah.
Exactly, yep.
Which again, is functionally the same as extending the current IGA for the same period.
So it sounds like we might just want to table this discussion and wait for the mayor to come back and break any potential tie here. Lindsay, doesn't, are you kind of a hard in one direction or the other? Or are you mostly just focused on the need to renegotiate the IGA?
Yeah, so I, I don't really have strong feelings one way or the another, whether we re-up it or if we put a moratorium on it, you know, let it lapse and put a moratorium. I don't care which way we go and if somebody wants to have a discussion with me about the merits of doing one way or versus another, I'm definitely open. But I certainly think renegotiating the IGA is, is a priority.
Well, I guess I'm open to suggestions about how we move forward. I wanted to check what the rest of the board did, if we wanted to move on to the parking discussion after this discussion tonight or if we wanted to postpone that until January 11th as another work session.
I'm okay with postponing it.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, I guess my suggestion is I would be, functionally, I'd be fine with just signing the extension. I guess my experience the last go around is the board would redline a lot of the IGA. We'd send it to the county and the county would take some of the redline and basically send it back like, no. And so we'd redline the IGA again and we'd send it to the county. And the county would sit on it for two weeks and send it back without anything. And then sit there for a month before we'd send back the same redline. And we've pretty much just got stonewalled in negotiation with the county the last go around. There was some give and take and there was a lot of progress, but it eventually got to the point where on the fundamental things, county wasn't gonna budge and they were elements that actually did align with our comprehensive plan and our master plan. And so I'm gonna put that out there, that my experience was that the county had the power in those negotiations, because it was a year and a half ago. They knew that the board trustees was gonna change. And I think the other thing that this board should consider is this is going to lapse March of 2022. Uh, that's a month after this next election. So by signing an extension as this board, if you are stepping off, you are essentially almost locking in place the next elected board that's coming in. Whereas if you move forward with the intent to let it lapse, you're opening it up for anybody who might run in this next election to really attempt to put their spin on the master plan and the comprehensive plan. So that would be my last two cents on this. And with that, I would motion to table this discussion uh, because it doesn't sound like we have consensus on this board about this.
Well, and I guess I wonder, Mayor Protem Baumhoffer, if there's a desire of the board though to have an executive session um, either before the meeting next week or a meeting, one of the ones in January, to talk further kind of the negotiation strategies or approach, but I think that is something to evaluate right now.
I should note that I would not be able to be present for the meeting next week or the week after.
So maybe in January, you're saying the January 4th one, Trustee Taylor, you wouldn't be present for?
I would be present for that, yes.
Okay, I mean, perhaps we could aim to do an executive session if there was support for that January 4th meeting.
I would support that because my main argument really does have to do with negotiation strategy and what I think we could potentially look at coming across in this new IGA to the county with.
I'm a second nod of four on that.
Yep, I'll nod.
Sounds good.
Great. Okay. Sounds like we have a plan.
Sounds like it and it seems like we had agreed to postpone the parking discussion till January 11th, is that correct?
Yep.
And I am in touch for the next two weeks, so it, if I don't respond to your emails on the town email, I'm sorry.
We won't hold it against you. Hope you're doing something fun.
Have a good vacation.
Yeah. Okay, so we, I think we're good to adjourn, 8:41?
Yep, sounds like it.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.